All right. Hello, hello. Good morning, good evening, good afternoon, wherever in the world you may be. Thank you for joining us for advocacy training if you've been with us for session one and two. Thanks for coming back for this session. We're going to give it a second here so more folks have some time to join us. But just a quick announcement, if you missed it on social media yesterday or through the Rising Blue Network newsletter. This is actually a special session of advocacy training. So we are going to pause on session three and session four. We are bumping them back a week. So instead of session four being next week, in session three being this week. Session three is now next weekend and session four is the weekend after that. So we are just extending the program by one week in order to make room for this special open community discussion. We'll talk a little bit more about why this decision was made today. But for now, go ahead and feel free to introduce yourselves in the chat. And for today's icebreaker, what brings you hope? Whether that is hope in relation to the climate crisis or, you know, any other issues that you may be dealing with in your community or you in your personal life. What are some of the things that bring you hope for the future? And we'll get started in just a minute. Okay, awesome to see folks from all over the place. We have some friends from Pakistan, South Sudan, the Philippines, Czech Republic, Morocco, Canada, France, from the US, from Liberia. Awesome. And then we also, some things that are bringing you all hope is the resilience of nature. That's definitely a big one for me as well. Somebody else said togetherness and teamwork. Yes, definitely. People who started with very little making a big difference. Absolutely. Getting over the odds is a big one. Seeing all of the amazing young people already making a change in the world, whether that be big or small. Absolutely. That's another big one for me. As somebody who works directly with youth leaders all over the world, it is very, very inspiring. Someone else said something that brings me hope is my job and all of the people I meet that have the same views to help the planet. Someone else said, hope teamwork, collaboration, connecting, training. Yeah, I think these are all really special and important. Someone else said seeing and hearing about the changes that people are making and the steps forward in stopping it. Yeah, definitely. So today's session is so special because we are going to have this be a little bit more of an engaging and back and forth experience for our participants. I believe that the raise hand feature is allowed. And we may come to a point in the discussion where you will be allowed to unmute yourself. If you would like to ask a question to the group or share your thoughts and insights on everything. But for right now, we will stick to the chat until I let you know that it's time for that. But really today is important because obviously we've just had the election here in the United States. And I am from the United States. I have only ever lived in the United States. But I do make a point in my life to make sure I'm aware of how that is affecting and how the politics within the United States affect places outside of the United States on a global scale. And, you know, we want to make sure that all of you who are either from the United States or from outside of the United States are aware and are able to contribute to this discussion. We, we really just want to check in with our community and make sure that you are all feeling okay in, in this situation because of the ramifications of the election. And also just the fact that 2024 has been, I think they're calling it an election super cycle. And it's one of the most important election years for democracies around the world. Pretty much throughout all of human history, there's something, I think it's over half of the human population of Earth will be participating in democratic elections within the year 2024. So a lot of us have been dealing with probably some pretty strong emotions as it relates to who is in charge of a lot of the decision making happening right now. And, and that can be really overwhelming and it can feel really isolating. So we wanted to make sure that our participants in advocacy training, while it's really awesome that you are all here and showing up to learn about, you know, the ocean climate connection and social media and communications and this week, which would have been event planning and fundraising and then the week after campaign organizing. All of that stuff is still incredibly, incredibly important to learn about. But something else that is really important to acknowledge during times like this is the fact that these emotions can prevent us from moving forward in the movement and from taking action if we let them. So we just wanted to have a discussion and a place for all of you to kind of share how you're feeling and, and what are some ways that you think are the best for us to move forward. So that's kind of the little update for the program right now. We'll move to the discussion. We have some resources that we want to share. But we don't really have a strict layout for this session today. So if you do have anything that you would like to share at any point, feel free to share it in the chat. Share it in the Q and A. Again, use that raise hand feature if you'd like to unmute yourself. And I'm just going to pass it off to my colleague Jun Lee. She's been working with the Ocean Project for about two years now. And you've seen her on some of our previous sessions of advocacy training. And I just wanted to, to give her a moment to share her thoughts on this as well.
Hi, everyone. Thanks Laura. I was going through all the chats that everyone was sending over and I really do agree on what everyone said, what, what keeps them going. And when I first started working for the climate, whenever I'd meet someone more senior, I'd always ask them, what, what keeps you going? Cause as a young person, I don't know, it seems very dark. It seems like it's, there's nothing much I can do that I feel very miniscular. But despite all that, what keeps me going and keeps me hope was the fact that there, we're not alone, that, that we have people around us that are going to this, towards the same goal, wanting to protect the earth, the ocean. And the community is very strong as, because I guess like the vulnerability of itself. We need to be more connected, more network, you know, have more passion. So yeah, it's really great to see that everyone agrees on the fact that people and the people that we work with is one of the biggest hopes that we have. So in that note, thank you Laura and, and appreciate you very much. I grew up in the States, lived there for like seven years and then I lived in Korea, South Korea. And now I'm in Argentina, lived in Spain, like all over the place. And every time I go to a certain country, it feels very much so that, you know, sometimes we're not under the leadership that we want to be under. But despite that, we need to continue working for the cause that we believe in and try to make efforts to make a change, a positive change to the world. And there's this little meme where it shows the current leaders of Russia, China, South Korea and the States. And why I'm bringing that up is just to let everyone know that South Korea also has a president that does not care as much about climate. And as a person who cares very much for the climate, it is alarming for that particular initiative. But despite that, actually this year in September, an eight-year-old and 12-year-old young girl, youth activist for the climate, made the first win in court for climate for, against the Korean government because they didn't care much about the climate and they actually won. And it was the first case in Asia. And what I'm trying to get to here is despite what happens when we continue doing the work that we are doing and acting upon the ideals that we have, there is going to be change made and there is hope. So yeah, that, that was my little two cents in, in the discussion before we start. And I think it'd be very much appreciated and, and really, I'm really curious to, to see what other people think, what they feel. Also considering that the States is, is a country where a lot of other countries get affected very much so. So, so, you know, what next steps do you think, believe we as not only ocean activists, but as the ocean project, World Ocean Day, what, what we can do to help you all. Those kinds of discourse, I think, would be very much fruitful in today's discussion as well. So yeah, passing it back over to Laura.
Yeah, absolutely. And, and I appreciate your, your insights, Jun. And, and you know, there are, there is a, a global trend toward more authoritarian types of government and right wing ideology. And today we don't really want to discuss the actual policy and politic of a lot of this because that's not what this forum and, and space is for. We do definitely want to see different ideas and, and, you know, diversity of thought when it comes to how do we move forward and how do we manage these solutions? But what we don't want, just as a reminder to everybody, we don't want to actually talk about the specifics of the policies today. We just want to share this space with you as community members. So that being said, I am trying to put out this poll here. There we go. I just launched this poll for the session. In three words, how do you feel about the current state of the world? And then what are the best steps that you think an individual can take in terms of action in their own community? What is on an individual scale, what can we do? So as we are thinking about that, I just wanted to share this quote with you all from Greta Thunberg that I found yesterday while preparing for this session. And I think that it really is a good way for us to start thinking about these things. Avoiding climate breakdown will require cathedral thinking. We must lay the foundation while we may not know exactly how to build the ceiling. So again, with the way that everything is going right now, there's a lot of uncertainty and there's a lot of fear and panic that I've been hearing from community members that I've been feeling myself. And it can be very overwhelming if you're not able to, you know, lean on other members of your community for emotional support, physical tangible support, material support. And this concept of cathedral thinking is, you know, these grand ideas, these really big intricate, beautiful things that we can build while we still don't really know how to put the roof on the structure. That's okay. And that's kind of what I meant when I said, we don't really want to talk about politics today. Because we can still move forward without knowing exactly what the end goal is. And I think that that is something that is really important for us to think about. We can, we can wonder and think about and develop strategies to achieve certain goals and, and wind up at a specific end point. For example, you know, solving the climate crisis, that's a really big one for all of us. But there's so many different ways we can go about actually getting there that we don't want to get caught up in all of this. We still just need to be moving forward regardless. So let's see where the, where can I see the poll results here? Zoom? Well, I'll take a look at those later. Apologies here. All right. So this is a resource that I found from, I believe it's the Climate Mental Health Network. So another thing that I would like to mention is that this conversation today is also very similar to a webinar that we will be having in December about youth climate activist mental health, sharing climate emotions and, and talking about wellbeing as it comes to an advocate. So these are just some ways that are very commonly suggested to, to be able to cope with some of the negative emotions that we might feel during these kinds of difficult political times. The first one, validation, you are not alone. I would say that is definitely true. Every single one of you here participating in this session right now is, is not alone currently in this moment, but if you were aware of this session to begin with, you registered for the program. I'm sure that means that you are already working with other folks who are dedicated to similar or the same causes as you. And that in and of itself, like many of you said at the beginning, what brings you hope? The fact that there are so many communities and, and people around the world who are working towards these goals that we all have collectively is very, very special. And that to me especially is, is something that I kind of consider as, as my north star and, and something that I consider to be really, really helpful when I'm feeling down in the dubs. Then there's breathing, you know, reconnecting with your physical body. The, the psychological processes and the physical processes that happen in the body when we have anxiety. Sometimes don't necessarily feel like they're as important as what's going on up here. But our mind and our body are very much connected. So doing a grounding exercise, making sure that you're trying to slow down your heart rate a little bit and, and just making sure you're connecting with your physical self as well as another really important way to handle this stuff if you feel like you're getting a little worked up. Now, before we move forward with some of this other stuff, I did want to make sure that we're opening up the floor here to folks who where did we go here? Okay. I'm going to, if you've not answered the polls yet, I'm going to stop them here. And we will check out the details. Oh, no, my screen is being here we go. Come on. Apologies, guys. This is Zoom is being really strange right now. Anyway, if you do have anything to share about anything that we've gone over so far, please feel free to share your thoughts in the chat. Especially if you yourselves have felt any of the things that we're talking about right now. Here we go. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that. Where were we here? I wish Zoom was cooperating with me. I think I just updated it and the, the settings are not letting me actually look at the poll results, which is not helpful at all. But I think that if anybody has anything that they would like to add, feel free to use the raise hand feature and request to come off of mute. That is something that we have not tried in any of our webinars before. So if you would like to, definitely go ahead. Let's see, we do have some thoughts in the chat here from Katie. I am actually quite anxious about the impact that the election will have on the climate long term. Very much same. You are not alone, Katie. I would say that is certainly something I've been thinking about and there is a lot of difficulty in, in coming to terms with that. And I think it's also a time thing. As we move further away from the immediate results, it hasn't even been a week. It hasn't even been a full week. As we move away from the immediate results, I'm sure that these bigger emotions will start to settle down. I hope that they do, or we at least get a better handle on them and will be able to move forward. Someone else said, I find the best way of battling environmental anxiety for me is actually taking action. Yes, absolutely. And that is something that we're going to talk about here in a moment. Jun, do you have anything that you would like to add to this so far?
Yeah, I think the age that you are also, it impacts you in different ways. Which if, that's why I feel like a lot of young people often feel more, you know, the pressure to engage or to do something because it's a direct consequence for us. And as, sorry if I'm pronouncing your name wrong, but Alessa mentioned, the best thing that we can do is to continue taking the action because if it's not us, at least for me, it seems like it's, it's the younger generation that does the moving and does continuously, despite the circumstances, continuously push for it. And I just saw Dakota chatting into the group to take some time, regroup, find your people. With your people, raise your voice and push for change, focus on the things you have and opportunity to change. And I, I think this is very much a valuable comment that Dakota made. Because, you know, sometimes our group of friends or group of people we work with may not share the same thoughts and trying to keep your boundary and keep your beliefs, you know, safe while not being, having any direct collision or, or difficulties within your working group would be very much important as well. So finding your people in these times would be very much meaningful. So yeah, I, I agree. It's, it's quite difficult times worldwide. But yeah.
We, we really appreciate everyone bearing with us as well. For Jun and I both on a personal level, this has been a difficult week for our mental health. And I think that I just wanted to touch on that transparency with all of you quickly before we get to Sasa here, who has his hand raised. Because it, this may come across as a little bit scatterbrained. This session is already a little bit all over the place. We're having issues with Zoom. And, and you know what? I think that that's okay. Because it's difficult to be put together and it's difficult to maintain a certain level of functioning when we're dealing with all of these emotions as well. So we just wanted to say, we really appreciate all of you for, for joining us for this as well. Now Sasa, I'm going to allow you to talk if you would like to share. You will have to unmute yourself.
Good morning. Good evening. Oh, thank you so much. About the first question, first question. To talk about the past agreement, past agreement. Parties agreed to leave one billion dollars to tackle the climate watching. But now ten years has been. We are in the road, the man was not at list. A cops, so many cops have been there, but nothing has been done. If you see the level of climate change in all over the world, especially flooding, drought, we lose our biodiversity. It is really terrible for us as a, as a citizen of the globe. So we are in a dangerous stage. Addition for that, we know US contributes a seventy-five percent of global funding. But now as you explain about coming out, your president, we don't know what is going to happen by twenty twenty-five, January, twenty twenty-five. So we don't know, the USA government is going to cut the funds, oh, we don't know. So we are in the stage of dangerous now. If you see, I think about my country now, more than one point four million has been displaced by the flooding. So they're gonna hold their supporting there, even the money not enough. So all of us, we are putting our eyes on the quarter nine. But now we don't know what is going to happen, but I don't know what is going to happen. I don't know. Number two, what's the gun in, in the video text? One, what we have to do if we, some of us here, we are, we are youth. In my country, we contribute to seventy-five percent of the total population. So we as the youth of, of the global, we have to unite, we have to work hard. And we have to campaign to work with our government, to talk to our politicians, because features for us. We see our biodiversity all over the world, animals are dying, so it is our figure. So what we have to do, we have to unite. We have to work hard so that we can campaign and we can talk to our politicians, please. They support climate, climate change in all our countries, in Africa, in global, in Middle East. Whatever you are in the Caribbean, ocean countries, islands, like us, join hands together. We support each other so that we can, in the future, we can protect our country. How we can make global or better for, for our future of our children. Thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you so much for your words, Sasa. That was very influential and impactful. First of all, thank you for, for, you know, mentioning the, the COPs, these large conferences that we have you know, seen not a ton of action come from as of late. It can be very disheartening and, and I appreciate you touching on that because, you know, what are we supposed to do? What are we supposed to do when those in power are simply not doing what they need to do? Especially when, like you mentioned, the tangible results of the climate crisis are actively already happening. Like you said, I think it was one point four million people in South Sudan are already displaced due to the climate crisis. And that is happening, like you said, as well, all around the world. And it comes down to listening to one another and, you know, standing in solidarity with those who are experiencing the worst of the climate crisis. For those of us who live in the global north, standing in solidarity with those who are in the global south and who have contributed the least to the climate crisis, but who are facing the worst impacts in a, in a very disproportionate way. So thank you, Sasa. I very, I very much appreciate that as well. We also have Suhal. I apologize if I'm mispronouncing your name. You said something in the chat and you have your hand raised. I'll let you speak in one minute. For me, I believe one of the best ways to control climate anxiety is to be around like-minded people. Go out, for example, hiking or walks in parks, et cetera. Watching nature documentaries also helps. So Suhal, I will allow you to talk if you would like to add to your comment.
Hello?
Yep, you're good.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, hi. Okay, this is my first. Thank you for having me. Yeah, I would like to expand upon what I just said. I'm sorry if I'm talking too fast. I just have a lot of anxiety as well. Yeah, so like personally, I, I believe being around like-minded people because the climate crisis as well as other forces Yeah, so like, um, personally, I, I believe being among like-minded people because the climate crisis as well as other forces. Um, kind of give, gives us young people anxiety because like, it's love we can't control, right? But like, we humans are a social species, like we like to be amongst like-minded people and we can empower each other. Um. From my experience, um, I'm gonna give a little sub-story. Well, for example, I was in high school. And I used to be a little bit of an activist, you know, I always tell people, you know, save the whales and all that, um. But a lot of people didn't take me seriously. Though I wasn't really among so many much, uh, sorry, I wasn't among so much of like-minded people. However, I can thankfully say that since I uh finished high school last year. Uh, for example, I, I was in Hermanus, I, I live in South Africa, just to let you know. And I was in the Western Cape Hermanus and I was at this organization called the Shark Conservancy. And I met two like-minded people from America, who I'm glad to have us to attend. And I think just, in general, there are a lot of like-minded people. So, that's, yeah, that's, that's for the being among people and for general, I think going for walks in parks and also just for. Hiking, cause we need to be, uh, like, it takes some pressure, you know, cause like. And you know, in general, if you have anything, you're gonna need to go for a walk and like, you know, get all out, um, if I, if I'm making sense, you know? And, you know, explanation documentaries, for example, I watched uh Our Planet by David Attenborough. Uh, there's also a second season, I believe you also watched it, um, uh, in the top, man. So yeah, so like lots, lots of great, uh, keywords to watch positive stuff, cause something in context to, um. These documents, all our festive stuff, you know, showing the negative side of climate change and et cetera, but. There are some stuff like, with some like Our Planet and, um, what else? Basically, anything from BBC, you know, it's great to watch the how, um, the animal kingdom and all that, you know, just to like. Yeah, that's all I wanna say. Thank you.
Yeah, of course. Um, I appreciate that and I think that, um. You know, your point about finding like-minded people is, is very, very, very important and I. I absolutely agree that it is absolutely critical. In terms of maintaining longevity in this moment, to have people who understand what you're going through. Because they are themselves going through it as well. Um, you know. We'll talk here, I'm gonna move forward, uh, in this, to this slide. What does community actually mean to you? What does it mean to, um, you know, have people in your life that you can depend on when we're in these poor situations? And then what does that look like in terms of reciprocal care? How can you lean on them? But also, how can they lean on you? What are you bringing to the table, um, to help support those around you? Um, and one of the most simple things in all of that is simply understanding, um, the fight that we're in. And if you, your entire community is made up of people who are not on the same page as you, that can feel really alone. And, and, or uh lonely and isolating. Um, so I definitely appreciate that for sure. Uh, now we do have Ayann, um, again, apologies if I'm mispronouncing your name. Um, but I will go ahead and allow you to share yours as well.
Hi, thanks for letting me talk. Um, I think a big thing for this is. One, making sure you are in the right space for yourself to be able to put the best effort you can in fighting. And especially with everything that's going on in the world is just taking care of yourself, taking the time to get your mental health in check. And using all the feelings you are having and to fuel your fight in climate change and fuel. Everything that you're trying to do and not, and also remembering that there is always people trying to do something, no matter where it could be. Even if it's not your computer, in your communicate, community, it could be somewhere completely different, but there's always people that are there. Even if not with you, but supporting you and doing, fighting with you.
Yeah, I am. Thank you so much for, for sharing that. I think it's the, the sentiment that we get when we fly on planes. And they say, in case of an emergency, these oxygen masks will come down. They always tell you to put your oxygen mask on first before you help anyone around you. And it's, it's that kind of mentality. Um, that I think as advocates, we actually tend to stay away from because. By nature of, of what we care about and the work that we do is, is caring so much about the world around us. That we almost forget to care about ourselves. Um, and the way that we can actually sustain this. Is to avoid doing exactly that, um, because we can't pour from an empty cup, as they say. Um, yes, you can put your best effort in when you are at your best. Yes, absolutely. Um, so thank you for, for sharing your, your thoughts on that, cause I definitely agree that it is extremely, extremely important. Um, now we have Mike with their hand raised. Um, I will let you go ahead and share.
Mike, just letting you know if you're speaking that, um, we can't hear you.
Are you there, Mike? Okay. Um, I am going to pause on Mike. I will come back to you. Let's see if we can. Um, get our audio figured out and I will move it over to Stefan, Steven. Uh, you can go ahead and share your thoughts.
I'm in, so, uh, my point of importance of Monday is so. Uh, hello, uh, I'm Steven from Liberia. Uh, are you kidding me?
Yes.
Uh, okay. My plan, uh, they put off too many. Uh, in, in a minute, for middle main, based on the comment is to, they're like a group of people that honestly my point of view. On how to handle the climate, that kind of support, uh, my mindset and creativity. And that helped me in my emotional town and my, in the distance, that those are staying for me. And how I can impact them like with some knowledge and sort of have the same knowledge as me, uh, in fighting. The climate change and for animal survival. Yeah, I don't wanna make, uh, that short and question then based on my point of view. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Stefan. I really appreciate that. And, and to touch on what's on screen here, these, these questions about community. What does that mean to you? Um, I think that community can mean a lot of different things. And it can mean something different to all of us, but it can, it can look like. Um, you know, the people that you go to school with, the people who, you know, live on your block or in your building. Um, the people who are in your immediate family, who are in your extended family, people who are in, you know, religious groups and affiliations. That you participate in, um, after school activities like sports and clubs and, and, you know. Fraternities, sororities, those kinds of things. Community can be so many different things for so many different people. And it can also look like different people coming from all of those places into one group that you yourself are connected to. That is your community. Um, and it doesn't necessarily just have to be the people who live within your immediate surroundings either. It can be. You know, this global community, I feel very much in community with all of you when we have advocacy training and, and it's wonderful. Because there are so many of you from so many different places all around the world, um, who join us for these sessions. So it is very, very nice to have such a broad, um, diversity of people within. You know, my community and our community, um, it makes me feel very, very, um, fulfilled in, in some ways. Um, I will see if Mike is available again. If you're there, feel free to share your thoughts, Mike. Okay. I'm not sure if we're gonna be able to hear from Mike, um, but that's okay. I am going to, um, move. To this one as well, cause I feel like this, um, has been touched on a bit already during this discussion. Um, this is the Wheel of Climate Emotions that was developed by the Climate Mental Health Network. Um, we'll also move on to sharing some resources in a minute, but I just wanted to share this because, um. I think we have a lot of, I mean, we have a lot of emotions anyway. But when it comes to the climate crisis specifically, it can be difficult to kind of even just name. Those emotions and there are a lot of, there's a whole spectrum of them. So I, I'm not, you know, a psychologist, I'm not a, a mental health expert. Um, I have spoken at length. About youth advocate, mental health, it is something that is extremely important to me, but I don't feel like I have the authority to truly explain. Um, how helpful one of these uh emotion wheels can be in terms of having these conversations. So I highly, highly recommend, like I said, we'll, we'll share some resources in a bit. But I highly recommend checking out the Climate Mental Health Network. They have tons of resources just like this. For those of us who are feeling overwhelmed or, or just bogged down by some of these, um. Issues that we're facing right now. Um, I do see a couple of comments about community in the chat. Uh, Sasa mentioned, community means inclusivity of all people in climate change or in development of our nation or continent. Uh, that is definitely an interesting perspective for sure. Um, it's a good, because a lot of the times when we talk about community. We don't necessarily include people who are against our values, but in this case, that potentially could mean that. And, and, you know, that is part of solidarity is standing with everyone who is impacted negatively. By certain policies and cer- certain things that are happening in the world, regardless of if they are. In agreement with you about how to solve that issue. Um, so thank you, Sasa, for sharing that as well. And then Emily also said. A sense of community is really important becau- uh, towards a cause, because even if inside the community, we have a lot of diversity. The community needs to understand that in terms of nature, everyone will be, everyone in the community will affect anyhow. Will be affected anyhow by climate change, so they need to work together to prevent or face it. Yeah, exactly. That's, it's very much going back to that concept of solidarity. Um, I like to use the example of. If you like to breathe, you should probably care about the climate, you should probably care about the ocean. Because the ocean produces over half of the oxygen that we breathe and it doesn't matter who you voted for, who you, um. You know, support politically or what your convictions are in terms of policy. We still need the ocean because it, it impacts us regardless of where we live. Um, so yeah, I, I very much appreciate Emily, both you and Sasa's comments on this. It's very, very relevant and, and helpful here. Um. I also wanted to share this resource that I found as well. Um, this is from Panu Pichala from the University of Helsinki. Um, his website is here at ecoanxietyandhope.blogspot.com. I definitely recommend checking out his blog. He's got a lot of excellent writing. Um, I'm not gonna go through this whole thing again because I'm not a psychologist. Um, but I did just think it was interesting to think about, um, breaking down some of the different types of ecological grief. Right? We just talked about, um, the climate emotions, grief is one panel right here. And that is broken down into all of these as well. There's other, um. Panels on the emotion wheel that are mentioned here, but I think that grief is, is definitely one thing that I have been feeling a lot of. Um, and that is very difficult to deal with in a lot of different ways. Um, and. I think I am, I'm definitely grateful for all of you, just for allowing me to show up today a little bit all over the place. And I think that that in and of itself is a really excellent example of showing up for your community. You know, I, I struggled with figuring out how to handle this session. But I knew that I wanted to show up for all of you and by you guys participating in this discussion. That is also you showing up, not only for me, but also everyone else, um, participating in this discussion as well. So that makes me feel much happier today. Um, there are a couple of other, uh. Resources that I put up here that I thought might be relevant to the conversation. Um, this is just something going through a transition. Sometimes it goes well, sometimes it doesn't. Uh, but there are all of these shifts in uh emotion as we move through a transitional period. This denial is where a lot of people are. I think like, oh, it's not gonna be that bad or, um, you know. I, I don't think this is really gonna affect me or the people around me, that kind of thing. And then down here, I'm sure a lot of you may be familiar with, um, apathy. And if you get too overwhelmed with stuff, it can be unfortunately very easy to fall into apathy and, and not. Want to care as much because you are simply so tired. Um, and I feel like so many people have been there. I've definitely been there. Um, but what we also want to avoid is this little bit over here. This is talking about burnout. Um, you know, you're so aggressively against what's happening. You are ignoring any semblance of self-preservation in this and you work yourself to the bone. Uh, to try to fix everything, even though only one person, you're only one person. You can't have the full weight of the world on your own shoulders without relying on the people around you. So I just wanted to share this one as well. I do see we have some additional, uh, comments in the chat here. Um, Tanya said, uh, that they went to, they went to, uh, the World Wildlife Fund. Last year for the Earth Hour Festival and it was the first time I encountered more than two people who were actually excited to work towards the wellbeing. Of our earth. That's amazing. Um, I was, that was the first time I had an idea what a community related to conservation organizations would look like. Many like-minded people from different backgrounds, having different stories coming together to fight for a common cause, just like today. Um, Tanya, that's such a special story and I really appreciate you sharing that because, um. As some of you are familiar, we do have a couple of members of our World Ocean Day Youth Advisory Council joining us on the call here today. Um, and I would like to share a story from one of our council alumni from a couple of years ago. Jasmine from Canada, um, she had a very similar story to you, Tanya, where she had been, you know, very concerned. With the issues that are going on and almost all of the advocacy that she had ever done in her life. And almost all of the community building that she had done was almost exclusively, um, online and through the internet. Because she had such a difficult time finding in-person connections with people. And I think that that is, um. Excuse me. Oh, something stuck in my throat. Um, I think that that is a really underrated thing that people kind of go through. Especially those of us who, you know, I, I can speak for rural communities in the United States. Um, especially for, you know, queer people and members of the LGBTQ community who live in, um, areas who are not as accepting. Of that kind of. Life, um, that make it very difficult to find other members of community. And the same thing kind of applies as in terms of climate advocacy as well. Because, you know, when we're living in a place where our community, you know, that we are a part of. Whether we like it or not, um, does not agree. It can be very isolating, as I've mentioned several times already. Um, but this is the thing, Tanya, about joining conversations like this and, and, you know, participating in these types of discussions. Is so important because, you know, this is how we are able to find one another. Um. Now, uh, getting to resources, and again, if anybody else has anything they would like to share, please, please feel free to do so. We can have more people, um, raise their hands. We still have about ten minutes left, so we definitely have some time to talk about some stuff. But, um, I highly recommend, like, take a screenshot of this list if you can, um. Write it down if you can. Uh, I have some of the books here, um, and I, I would like to. I wrote some quotes down from All We Can Save by Ayana Elizabeth Johnson and Catherine Wilkinson. That's the first one that's listed up here. Um, if you've read this book, you know how important this is. Um, if you've read this book, you're familiar with Ayana Elizabeth Johnson's work. It is some of the most impactful. Um, climate advocacy writing that I have come across in the last, I don't know, ten years probably. Um, so I just wanted to share this quote, um. Be still and listen. There are silent tears flowing, people talking in hushed voices, trying to contain their anger, fears, grief. And despair and, and despair. At first, you will have to listen hard for the sounds of these times, but they will get louder as you pick up their vibrations. We are hurting, we are afraid, we are exhausted, at least some of us, some of the time, and some of us again and again. And then you will know you are not alone. Um, and to me, that quote felt very important to share today. Because I know that a lot of us are living in areas where. areas where you might not have a lot of like-minded individuals around you. And it can be, you know, when there is positives going on and there is large-scale celebrations going on, like when we had the Paris Agreements in twenty fifteen. That was a pretty big deal at the time for a lot of people. That was one of the first major steps in the right direction that we had taken in in some time at that point. Um, and I remember a lot of cheering and celebration, very loud from members of the community all around the world. But when there is less of that and we have things like the election this week um that are not necessarily what we wanted them to be, trying to find members of the like-minded community can become much more difficult. And again, that's why, like, listening to those and and listening for those uh who are having the same kind of reaction as you is an excellent way to go about finding community. It's a great way to build community. Um, so yeah, this is uh where is it here? I have a whole bunch of books. All We Can Save, this is the cover by Ayana Elizabeth Johnson and Catherine Wilkinson. I hope that you're able to um read this if you can and check out some of the other resources that they have. Um, again, I I really do recommend taking a screenshot of this and and I'm happy to share this list with you all as well. Um, but I also have a list of groups and websites that talk a lot about this as well. Um, the Climate Ment- Climate Mental Health Network, uh that was that first graphic that I shared. Um, that was just directly from um their website. I I highly recommend checking that out as well as the Climate Psychology Alliance, the Good Grief Network. Um, and then the rest of these uh on this list here are either individual resources themselves. Excuse me. Um, they are either individual resources themselves or they are um repositories of resources. So they are are lists of resources and toolkits and and blog posts and articles and writing about building community and and building capacity on an individual level and a a collective level with your community um in terms of climate mental health, in terms of active um organizing, in terms of uh, you know, talking about climate emotions and and legal things as well. There's this one, which is the World Youth for Climate Justice, the Youth Handbook, um is a really excellent one as well. Um, I just, again, can definitely send these lists to you all. I see um you'd like to send to your email. Um, I can definitely do that. Um, I can also add these uh links to the description when the recording for this session is uploaded to the YouTube channel on uh the World Ocean Day YouTube channel. So I think that, where are we here? We have five minutes left. So um if anybody else would like to share their final thoughts on all of this, I know, again, it's been a little bit all over the place, but I just wanted to kind of open it up and and see, test the waters, see how our our attendees were feeling about the the world today. So um if anybody else has anything they would like to share, feel free um to raise your hand again. Uh, but I will also like to um pass it off to Jiun again as well, if if you do have any additional kind of final thoughts on on this today.
Um, I think hon- honestly, I wish um I knew these kinds of opportunities or webinars when I was a bit more younger. Um, as in when I was like in high school or younger, to know that I wasn't alone as, you know, a young person. Um, and I I hope that there's, you know, a lot of young people here today too, to to know that there are resources, there are groups, books and people that you can reach out to. And I also just saw someone saying that they still do feel anxious and it's in, it's normal. Um, like, I feel that, like, this week I had to continue working, but at the same time, like, I was like, you know, for what cause, go- going through that progression cycle, um like ten times a day, like, you know. Um, but there's days like that, there's times like that, but we figure it out. Um, we get encouraged, we find opportunities and and spaces and talks that keep us motivated. Um, so yeah, I hope it was such a se- session for all the participants today. Um, and yeah, that's that's my final thought, I guess.
Yeah, and and I appreciate that as well. What Katie said in the chat, Jiun, still anxious, but this was encouraging. Absolutely. Um, I absolutely agree that that is one hundred percent normal in a situation like this. But um, I I feel very lucky that I get to, first of all, have access to these kinds of resources through the work that I do. But also have access to a community like this. Because I remember, you know, ten, fifteen years ago, when I was starting my journey in in climate advocacy, it was very daunting to try to find these kinds of things. Um, but that's why I feel so important, that we continue this work and and continue to engage with all of you. So if you also have any resources that you would like to share, um whether it's organizations or individuals who are working on stuff like this, on organizing or um climate mental health, uh please feel free to share them with me. Uh, and I can share them with our our broader audience. Um, I do see Sasa, you have your hand raised. We have like two minutes left, so if you have any final thoughts, just keep it kind of quick if you can. Um, I will let you go ahead.
We as youth, we are one point eight billion on the planet. So what we have to do, we have to work together, we have to collaborate. We have to we educate ourselves, capacity believing, if we have the resources, we have to support us. That we, you see that, if we as global source, we we go to supporting global map. If global map have, we have to support global source. Eh, in Clemente watching this really. Most of now, if we see in the world, you had unemployed one, you got the one dying, there's a lady in the world. Clement, Clemental, Clement, 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 affecting most of us as youth, women, people who have disabled. We have to reach up to grassroots levels. We are most of our youth who are not, but now we see now, we all, most of us are not binary. But our brothers who is in the growth, with levels in the religious, so we have to include them, educate them. I hope we can do better to our world. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Sasa. What a wonderful way to kind of tie a bow on this session. Um, I also see that uh Leia, Leia um in the chat here uh said that they are noticing a lot of people talking about how they didn't know of that many people who are interested in taking action on climate issues for a really long time. And there aren't that many projects near where they live. Um, and I think in in terms of they're they're asking for recommendations on how to find or start something yourself as somebody who doesn't know many people who would be willing to take part in it. Um, I really genuinely think that it starts with a Google search. If you have access to the internet, just type up climate action near me. Um, and and start there and see what you find. Um, that is a very, very basic step one kind of thing. But that is actually genuinely very helpful in a lot of cases. Um, and also going back to community, what we were talking about before, what community looks like. Um, you know, your sports team, your after-school activities, your religious groups that you're a part of. Um, there are ways to integrate sustainability into all of that. Like, for example, if you play um football or soccer, um or I guess American soccer. Everywhere else, football. Um, if your team uses plastic water bottles, you can work with them to see if they have reusable water bottles that they can bring. And it it's starting stuff as simple as that and and then building on that and and pulling people in from all of these places that, you know, sure, climate advocacy might not be the number one thing at the forefront of their brain, but they are still open to the idea and they might also be like you and not necessarily know where to start. And it all, all it takes is one person kind of sparking that around everyone else to kind of get everybody to come together. So um you're starting off strong already just by asking those kinds of questions. Um, so yes, uh, thank you all so much for um joining us for this session. Again, I I appreciate all of you bearing with us um during this time. It's it's been difficult for our staff team um dealing with the the fallout from the election and also a couple of things in our own personal lives that are impacting our ability to to show up as we normally do. Um, so again, really appreciate the grace that has been granted to us. But very, very excited to come back for session three next weekend um for our official event planning and fundraising session and then session for uh campaign organizing one week later um on Saturday, November twenty-third. So um again, if you do have any questions at all, if you have any additional resources that you would like to share, please feel free to email me at uh youth at theoceanproject.org. Um, or uh, you know, check out the contact me on the World Ocean Day website. However, you want to get in touch is okay. Um, but yeah, thank you again so much for this. I hope that all of you are able to you know, take a deep breath, ground yourselves, do what you need to do to feel okay, at least for a moment, and then find your best plan of action moving forward. Um, and I'm just very happy to be in community with all of you as we all kind of go through that together. So thank you and we will see you next week. Bye.
Bye, everyone.